Okay, good evening. I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. It is Monday, August 19th, 2019. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Reverend Mathias is excused this evening, so Ms. Schottke will be filling in as secretary. Can you please take the role?
Yes, I can. Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Reverend Mathias is excused. Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Schottke, here. Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
President Grant?
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Well, we have a celebration this evening for Peace Education Week. And, Dr. Gorman, I believe we have some guests here who would like to... Or is Mr. Helmholz going to introduce us?
Absolutely. So, Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask John Helmholz to come forward.
Superintendent Gorman, Madam President, members of the board, I apologize. We have a little last-minute media request coming in. I thought I had an extra minute. So, I am pleased to be here to... And I would like to invite our friends to join me. Mike Franz, Katie Valair, and Margot Selnow, who's a Grand Valley senior at Grand Valley State University. They're here to talk about the Peace Education Week. And as they come up to join me, I'm going to first start by reading the resolution that's prepared and will be in your packet for later approval. And then they will talk a little bit more about the details on what is being proposed and what they're offering up this year, as we have some of our friends from Grand Valley State University that are willing to visit our classrooms during the week of Peace Week. So, I'd like to start with the resolution. Peace Education Week, September 16th through the 20th. Whereas a world without war is in the best interest of all humanity, and whereas there is worldwide awareness of the desirability of world peace, especially in light of recent conflicts throughout the world, and whereas the United Nations has declared September 21st, 2019, as the International Day of Peace for nations involved in armed conflict, to declare a day of armistice, and whereas this annual world event has been observed by both religious and secular organizations in Grand Rapids in this new millennium, and whereas it would be fitting for the public schools and the other education institutions to participate, whereas there is a growing awareness of the need to learn the skills of conflict resolution in order to defuse the growth of violence in our communities, and whereas with the advent of the new millennium, there is a growing desire to change our communities and schools from a culture of violence to a culture of peace, whereas the goal of a peaceful world and tolerant societies and appropriate concern for all public bodies without regard to partisan politics, and whereas there are strong indications that the morale of students, development of responsible citizenship, and interest in school are directly affected by the perceptions of hope for their future, whereas there is a growing concern among educators regarding their responsibility towards students and the issue of world peace, whereas many Americans are now reassessing national security needs in a renewed national debate, whereas it is desirable that students of the country participate in that discussion in a rational way, whereas it would be fitting that a public declaration of a week of peace education would acknowledge public concern and help foster an attitude of hope and expectation. Therefore, be it resolved that it is the role of the schools to help young people understand the philosophies, goals, and values of other peoples, as well as the need to build workable structures for the peaceful resolution of disputes between nations and among people of different racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds. Be it further resolved that the Grand Rapids Board of Education does declare the week of September 16th through the 20th, 2019, as a week of peace education for the purpose of encouraging school activities focused on people living together in peace and harmony in an increasingly small global village. Be it further resolved that Friday, September 20th, be declared a day of peace education for the purpose of celebrating the special United Nations theme, "Celebrating Climate Action for Peace." Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed on file with the official proceedings of the Board of Education. I'd like to introduce Mike Franz to kick it off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll share.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Gorman. I used to address you in a different manner, but...
I was in Dr. Franz's class. At Grand Rapids Community College.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, now they know. And distinguished board members, I mean that 36 years ago, we began the Week of Peace Education in the spring of 1984. A very modest affair, a poster contest of some sort. And since then, it has evolved in different directions. We most recently have tuned in to the United Nations and the needs of the world because of the great educational possibilities that they have provided us. Last year, they dealt with human rights. The year before, I'm trying to remember now. And this year, with Climate Action for Peace. It just so happens, and most of you are not aware of this, that in January, the United Nations received a report from world scientists that they commissioned. And that report said that we have 12 years to get our act together on global warming. And they're using that term, or climate change, if you prefer. And, "Après moi, le deluge," disaster. Now, I've seen other reports on the environment, and they play with a timeline that's more generous than that. And it bothers me, and it may bother you too, that we keep getting reports that things are happening even faster than what the scientists have predicted. And it's time. It's time that we dealt with this on a global basis, because we have island nations and other peoples getting ready to move with the rising oceans. And I'm not going to go into detail on what's going on with the climate. I think you probably know a lot. But we'd like our students to have a chance to raise their questions and their concerns, too. In the resolution that we hope you'll pass tonight, one of the codicils says, "Whereas there are strong indications that the morale of students, the development of responsible citizenship, and interest in school are directly affected by perceptions of hope for their future." And young people around the world, the United Nations reports a half million participating in this year's program, are asking questions. What about my future? And we're leaving them with the kind of environment that we have created. And I don't know if we are ready to stand up and take responsibility for that, but it may be time. This program could help. I'm going to let Katie, Dr. Valair, talk for a moment here about the Grand Valley program, and we'll move on from there.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, sorry. There we go. Let's see. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. And we're kind of excited about the program this year, because we would like very much to focus on what young people can do. That is the focus from the United Nations. First of all, they have to be aware of what is happening with climate change. I think they're, you know, kind of sometimes vaguely aware, and of course, it's addressed in school. But I think that they would be really helped if they have the opportunity to hear a college student who is studying about these things in special programs that are just growing in many colleges and are certainly in place at Grand Valley State University. And many students have... Are making their life plans to work to change some of the things that have contributed to the global warming problem. And to me, that would be very, very inspiring to young people. And I think that college students can explain things in a brief way with the help of teachers who will be in the classroom. And we have a script for them that kind of derived from the UN information and appropriate for the age level of the students that the college student is working with. And I'm really happy today to introduce the person that we're working with, the student person we're working with from Grand Valley, and that is Margot Selnow. And we are also working with Dr. Kelly Parker, who is the head of the Environmental Department at Grand Valley. And so, I think I'll introduce Margot now. And she's going to talk a little bit about the script and what the process is for students to be part of this program during the Week of Peace Education.
Great. Thank you so much for having me here. Can I just do a quick time check? I know that we have limited time here. Yeah, okay. So, as you guys have heard, I am Margot Selnow. I am a senior at Grand Valley in the Environmental and Sustainability Studies Program. And my advisor is Kelly Parker. So, we've been working together to develop a script and really outreach to other students in this new program to really bring the best knowledge that we can to other youth advocates and people who are still in the process of learning this incredible knowledge that we can really use to live into our future, right? I remember my first environmental studies class, and we were going through all the environmental problems. And that was the point where I decided that this would be my life work, because I know this is my future, and I know this is future generations' things that we're going to have to deal with here. So, I'm really excited to be here and working with this. I just maybe want to do a check to see if anybody has any questions.
I know that per the superintendent, that I will be working with you to help make sure that we get this information out to our schools, to the teachers, and so that we can begin to schedule those times for the students to come visit and provide that script and that kind of exposure.
Yeah.
So, we just... We really appreciate all you're doing and for, again, championing this and bringing it to the board and for this opportunity for us to do the resolution and do the work. So, thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Should we have any public comment for board agenda items?
Well, we do, but it was our three guests, so I believe they were just being very thorough, I imagine, in filling these out as well. Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Next, we have the secretary's report.
Yes, thank you, President Grant. We have three items this evening. A conference of the committee chairs meeting is scheduled this coming Wednesday, August 21st, at 10:30 a.m. in Room 101 of the Administration Building. A legislative committee meeting is scheduled on Monday, August 26th, at 1:00 p.m. in Room 101 here at the Administration Building. And lastly, a finance committee meeting is scheduled on Monday, August 26th, at 4:30 p.m. in the board chambers of the Administration Building. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Mr. Larry Johnson to come forward to discuss back-to-school safety. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, President Grant, Superintendent Gorman, and the remaining board members. Less than 12 hours from now, we will be graced with about, hopefully about 15,000 students walking through the various doors of our schools. And I believe our staff is ready to receive them. In fact, I know they are. Today, we had an opportunity... Or the last week, we had the opportunity to work with our staff, and more in particular, our security staff, to prepare for receiving new students with a theme around continuous relationship building. But as we went through those exercises, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure that our kids can get to school safe. And so, some of our focus was around working with Dean's Transportation and just making an awareness to our community, reference to the high number of students who will be walking to school and excited about coming to school. So, our concern is young people crossing the street and not using the crosswalks. So, the message to our parents tonight is to just encourage your kids to use crosswalks, you know, pay attention to the flashing red signs on the bus. For those kids and those students who enjoy riding bikes during the nice weather, just encouraging them to, again, obey the rules of the road, wearing helmets, reflective clothing, utilizing the buddy system and not walking to school alone. Our staff will hit the streets tomorrow at about 6 o'clock, the public safety staff, and we will stay out until the last student has been received at home. If we get any calls at all that students have not made it in, we will be there. We just ask for some patience, as we know that in the first week or so, it's busing and arrivals to and from school can be a little difficult. But we want you to know that we will track every student and make sure that every student gets home, and our office will not close, and a live voice will answer phones until every student is at home, and then we can refer parents after hours to our after-hour paging system. We're ready to receive students. We're excited about a great school year. We're excited to see kids. I know our staff is just the public safety staff. It's just anxious to get back in front of the kids and continue to build those relationships. We thank you for your support, and again, we're looking for an exciting school year. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the crosstown.
All right. Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Mr. Kurt Johnson to come forward to discuss the annual crosstown throwdown.
The other Johnson.
That's right.
Good evening, President Grant, Superintendent Dr. Gorman, and distinguished board members. It gives me great pleasure to come before you once again to share information about our first big student activity event of the school year. Backed by popular demand, our annual crosstown throwdown, our rivalry season opener varsity football game with the Bengals of Ottawa Hills versus the Red Hawks of Union High School in our classic showdown. This year's event will take place on Thursday, August 29th, at Hausmann Field Stadium with a kickoff time of 6 p.m. This is the first varsity football game of the season, so it is a free event for the entire community. Added to this year's season opener have been some additional themes. In our midst will be the 20th and 30th classroom unions of the Grand Rapids Central Rams, Crescent High School Polar Bears, Ottawa Hills Indians, and the Union Red Hawks. So, we look forward to their attendance. And thank you, Kimberly Williams, for facilitating this theme for us. It's been a welcome addition. Also added is a first responders theme and component brought to you by Union High School Football Program, whereby officers and employees of the Grand Rapids Police Department and Honor Guard, the Grand Rapids Fire Department, the Kent County Sheriff's Division, the Michigan State Police, the Emergency Medical Response Unit, and our very own Grand Rapids Public Schools Security Department will all be joining us in a community collaboration to support students, student athletes, and staff of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. There will be specially designed... Excuse me. Special announcements, presentations, and interactions throughout the game that include specially-designed uniforms and helmet decals for both football teams, representatives from first responders that will join the superintendent at the 50-yard line for the ceremonial coin toss. I mean, shoot, coin toss, yes. First responder vehicles will be on display, and other halftime games and spectator interactions. We're looking forward to a fun-filled evening with the gates opening at 5 p.m. You may encounter some tailgating gatherings prior to the game starting around 4:30 p.m. As always, GRPS promotes a safe, fun-filled environment for all, and we must remind everyone that bags and backpacks will not be allowed into the stadium, and that all persons and items must pass security checkpoints to be admitted into the stadium. So, we look forward to seeing you all there, and thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have to call some of my fellow Ottawa Indians and make sure we're there. Next, we have our action items. The first item is the purchasing agenda. Are there any questions or items for discussion before we take a motion? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved. Swear.
Ms. Schottke?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias is excused. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
And President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve the Peace Education Week resolution? So moved.
Support. Can I make a comment?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you all for coming today and your dedication over the decades and your newly found dedication to this work. But it was just, you know, we pass resolutions a lot, and as John was reading this, I thought more deliberately about some of these words, but just two lines I thought were just really important. It's a great document, but just, "Whereas it is desirable that students of this country participate in the discussion." That's absolutely... And it's so important, and it is their country. And then, secondly, that is the role of the schools to help young people understand the philosophies, goals, values of other peoples, as well as the need to build workable structures. I mean, it's just pretty impressive. So, I just wanted to think about that as I take this vote tonight, and that this is... These are strong words that we're voting to support.
Yes, absolutely. Do we have any other comments? I'm sorry that... I agree. So, thank you very much for the work that you support our students with. And Ms. Schottke, if you'd like to take the vote?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias is excused. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the resolution to appoint a board of director to the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center. Do we have any discussion around that? Will?
Yes. Is this the charter school?
It is.
How many kids go to that school?
Matthew Beresford, will you please share some information with the board, please? I'd be happy to. And then, Superintendent Gorman, President Grant, and members of the board. 272 students attend Child Discovery Center.
Being prepared.
According to their website. Now, we'll see who shows tomorrow. We may do better. As far as the work tonight, it is for your recommendation and approval of Stephen Tanner as new GRCDC board member for a three-year term ending in June of 2022. Stephen comes to them with significant marketing and communications experience, and they are excited to have him join and craft a more cohesive community message. So, watch out, John. And then, Dr. Baker challenged me last time on what is their vetting process? And so, I took his homework and checked with them. So, they ask prospective board members to meet with a current board member, generally an officer, for an informal interview and conversation to see if it's a board... If their board service is a good fit. Then they request the resume and letter of intent and distribute it to all the board members. And then, they also ask to complete the school's volunteer background check, if they have not completed one in the last calendar year, including verification of citizenship. And then, once that check is confirmed, they come to the next scheduled meeting for an introduction and a formal interview by their board. And at the end of that interview, their board votes on the advancement for GRPS confirmation.
I have a follow-up question. Yes?
Of those 200-plus kids that are there, how many of them are Grand Rapids Public School kids if they would go to one of our schools, our real schools?
The trend is that they're a majority of resident district to Grand Rapids.
And so, they would be probably in some of our elementary schools where we would receive then the state funding, correct? Or not?
I don't think we know that for sure, but...
Well, certainly, some of them would. I mean, you know...
These are students, for the most part, who reside in the city of Grand Rapids.
But it's not our school.
It is not our school from an FTE perspective, although for various things like Matthew was bringing this evening, they need our board approval. And we do get a slight administrative percentage off their FTE program.
But the teachers are in the union and the support staff?
They are. Follow the same contract.
They have our contract. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Sue, I have a motion to approve the resolution to appoint a board of director to the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center.
Yeah, so moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias is excused. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping? So moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias is excused. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then, I do have one discussion item for this evening. It's not listed on our agenda, but I wanted to get this date in front of you all as soon as possible. I think that Ms. Lewis may be happy about this. We do have two board members who need to go through training for the superintendent evaluation, and it was not possible for us to schedule it with just those individuals. So, we are opening up that training to the full board for people who need a refresher, feel like they might... Well, we're requesting that full board is present for this. The date that we are looking at is October 7th. And so, they are very low on possible dates for training. I think that's the date that is available to us, before the deadline. Our deadline is... Ms. Schottke?
Well, we need to complete the evaluation before winter break of the school year. I'm sorry, not the school year, winter break of December. You know what I'm talking about. I'm not saying that well.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. And so, M.A.S.B., really, they had two dates, and one date does not work for Dr. Gorman. So, we're really down to October 7th. And so, that is the date for a board meeting. We would have a special meeting right before the board meeting. It's a two-hour training?
Yes, correct.
It would be a 4:30 meeting. Any immediate objections to that date?
I'll be late, but I'll be here about 5:00, 5:30.
You're an expert, right? Okay. But for sure, but for sure, Ms. Davis and Ms. Williams will be able to attend. Okay. Okay. Well, we will plan on that.
It's a specialty.
We will confirm the date with Reverend Mathias, but it seems like...
Perfect.
We can move forward with planning? Next, do we have public comment for non-agenda items?
We do not.
All right. Superintendent's comments?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
I just wish all of the kids good luck tomorrow, and all of the teachers. I know, being a teacher myself, that tonight usually is a night of restful sleep as you anticipate the excitement of the morning. So, to all the teachers, hopefully you get some rest and have a great day with your kiddos tomorrow.
All right. Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Ms. Schottke?
Yeah, welcome back to school. I've got two GRPS students who are, believe it or not, excited to go back to school tomorrow, which is just lovely, especially my little Jaxx who'll be in third grade at North Park. I had the opportunity to go back to North Park and see the school and be with some teachers, and I just wanted to pass on some gratitude that they had, and that's to the facilities team who has worked so incredibly hard to get them back in their classrooms this year. And they just had wonderful things to say. So, I too wanted to share that gratitude to Ken and his team for working so hard for our kids and our staff at North Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for indulging me with the class... Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for indulging me with the class reunions for the game. I appreciate it, and I really hope to see alumni out, as well as I'd like to congratulate all the new staff in their, I should say, all the staff in their new roles. I know there's been some changes, and I'm excited for what the school year will bring for our students. Ms. Lewis? I echo what Ms. Williams just said. I also echo what Ms. Davis says, because as a former teacher, I remember these nights before the first day of school really, really well, and it's always the hottest day of the year, no matter what. So I hope it's cool enough they can enjoy it. But I'm excited for my granddaughters. Both of them now will be in one of the museum schools, so this is a big transition for our family, so we're all looking forward to it, and I hope everyone else is looking forward to it as much as my granddaughters are.
Wonderful. I echo the same sentiments. Big thank you to all of our staff and administration. I know that you guys have been preparing for several weeks now, making sure that everything is in order, and making sure that every student will be welcomed and will make it home safely tomorrow. That's a big deal, so thank you very much for your work. I have a 10th grader, so her only message to me is, Mom, you don't have to be there. I don't need you. So I don't get to walk in on the first day. This is one of the first first days that I don't get to walk in on anymore. But, so, enjoy it. It won't last forever. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.